I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kennelworth, excuse me, for the year 2019 and has been posted a true copy of this schedule on bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied regards to this meeting. The laws of the public, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this all with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna.
Here.
Mr. Shelby.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi.
Here.
Mr. Masino.
Here.
Mr. Baudy.
Here.
Mr. Correll.
Here.
And Mr. Carrick.
Here. Okay. We have a motion for the approval of the March 14 minutes, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Grimaldi and seconded by Mr. Shelby. More favor?
Aye.
Kathy in Communications?
No communications, gentlemen.
So, we're going to move on to our old -- seeing no resolutions, correct. We're going to move on to old business, but before you gentlemen step up, and I know you're anxious, I just have to make one quick statement about some new business. I want to give someone an opportunity to maybe not be heard tonight for the reason that -- Ms. Zeta Savany, did you hear?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry for the pronunciation. I just want to let you know that our zoning officer is away on vacation and you may want to have an opportunity to question or speak to him. So, the first application that we're going to hear is, it may take some time, and I don't want you to wait and say, "Well, where's the zoning officer?" I want to let you know now if you want to redo this or do this for the next hearing. Because he's not here to answer any of the questions that you may need answered.
I don't need any questions answered.
So, you're choosing to wait and you want to be heard tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, not a problem. Seeing that, Application 369, ADHP Real Estate. Gary Goodman, on behalf of ADHP, good evening, everyone.
Yeah, we've had an opportunity to have a second technical review meeting with your professionals. They were kind enough to grant us the time and we understand from the comments of the board the past time, we have a situation where what is central to our application is the medical trailer because the medical trailer provides the diagnostic capabilities which allow the radiation, radiology components of the offices that Dr. Patel wishes to install in this building to operate at their maximum efficiency. I think there was testimony indicating how expensive the equipment is, that this equipment is generally leased by people. I understand annually it's a $40,000 a month maintenance just to keep this type of machinery in operation. So, in meeting with Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Quado, your engineer, your planner, it was clear that the location of the trailer is at best awkward, but I think what was demonstrated and which will be demonstrated in the testimony and your planner and engineer will have comments is that the trailer can come into the site and it can leave the site without any negative impact to the neighborhood. What happens on the site is going to be the responsibility of the applicant and he's going to have to work to make sure that there's a minimal disruption to anybody visiting the site on the weekend. I believe that, you know, as technology improves, things generally get smaller. So, the size of this medical trailer, which is kind of cumbersome now, may in fact, you know, come down as the years come by, go by. But I think what has to be put forward is that this is not a building of accountants and lawyers. This is a building that's going to be dealing with medical technology diagnostic activities that have to do with the detection and treatment of cancer. And so, the trailer, the weekend trailer, is an essential piece of equipment that we need to have on site. With that statement, I want to call our witnesses. We have Ed Deck, our engineer. And Ed, why don't you come up here?
Mr. Goodman and Mr. Goodman, before we get started. If I could, what is your game plan tonight in terms of witnesses, so we know what we're --
You know, if you have Ed Deck, you have our architect, Bob Zuccone, you have Jim Kacallis. I think Ed Deck's testimony will be the longest as far as the architect will basically be answering any questions that the board may have for the architect. I saw in the review letters from, I believe, your planner that they found that Mr. Zuccone's drawings were helpful in better understanding. I believe that with me flying, who have met with your planner and your engineer, we ironed out to the best of our abilities what can happen with regard to getting the trailer in and out, his recommendations or Christian's recommendations, I think, were taken into account and Ed will be testifying with regard to those. So, I don't see it as a long application, you know, depending on questions and concerns.
All right. Second thing that I have, I know the chairman wants to comment. Are you going to be submitting anything new tonight? Anything that the board has not seen?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I mean, if it is tonight, we are going to be finalizing the parking number and I believe the parking number that Ed's going to --
No, I mean, there's no revised plans?
No, no.
Okay, all right, all right. And I think the chairman wants to make a comment.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Goodman. I'd like everyone here tonight to know that this board has an 11 o'clock curfew. If we are going to go to 11 o'clock and if that be the case and we see this thing is coming to a close, we'll take a quick vote here of the board. If we would like to stay a little extra time, we will do so in the sake of getting this thing completed tonight. But I want to, I just want to let you know that that's what we have done in the past and that's what we're doing this evening. I would also, like everyone else that's on the, on the, on the, on for tonight, know that if we're halfway there at 10 o'clock, we probably will not be hearing any other cases after, what did we agree to?
10?
10:30. Okay. So, I want the other people out there to know, you see it encroaching 10 o'clock, we're going to, we're going to pause and we're going to let you know that we're probably not going to hear anything else after we get done. Having said that, there's a couple of things, some house cleaning I need to talk about. We're in receipt of a correspondence of March 27th from Mr. Petriello and there's some statements that are made in this letter that I need to address. And what it does is attacks this board the way ADHP was handled and some personal issues that I take issue with. I'd like everyone to know here in this room tonight that all the people on this board are professionals. We come from construction backgrounds, engineers, insurance backgrounds, teachers, architects, whatever our backgrounds are, we also understand the importance of moving things along. In January, when I was sitting here, I was, I am the chair and I was the chair that night. I was not on vacation and I will tell you that the paperwork that was presented to us was incomplete and we gave the applicant the opportunity to go back without notice and bring us the information that was required. I'm not going to get nitpicky into the two or three other items, but the one that screams to me is the one that says, "The board did not care about the time and money wasted." This is further evidence that the bias of the board against women-owned businesses. That strikes me quite hard. That is such a false accusation to me personally. I've been in business for 44 years. I understand what a WB is, a WBE is. I understand that, and maybe most of you know that, I have a wife that's in the business, a daughter that's in the business, our extended families are in the business and we respect women 100%. To say that this board was holding back or costing the applicant money is absolutely inaccurate. If I could tell you that this thing started in May of 2018, we're still here. There are some things in this letter that have been, some things here that are accusations made towards our planner, which are inaccurate. At this point, we would like everyone to know that you are going to be treated fairly as you've always been. We've done everything in our power to, I don't want to say that, I retract power. We've done everything that we possibly could to make this run seamless. We're not in the business here to run up anyone's bill for professionals and I would have to say that this board is a good board and we work with the applicants all the time. We embrace new business in our town. The work that this applicant is doing is phenomenal. We just need to get it right and that's all we stem to do. I'm going to ask Mr. Goodman, if you could, take a good look at those four paragraphs and how damaging those statements are to people on this board that are respected, that have integrity and the damaging statements hit home. I would ask maybe to ask Mr. Petriello or your firm to retract those statements and that as board chairman I'm asking you. And I can promise you this, you will have a fair hearing tonight. You will have a fair decision tonight, whichever way it goes, but I could tell you this much, these statements inaccurate. That's all I have to say.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mr. Petriello is a principal of his own law firm.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. I realize that.
Yeah, so, I can only say that I've been in the application for just a number of months. It's my understanding from the applicant that he's been involved in trying to do this project for some 18 months. I work with Mr. O'Brien, other towns, I work with Christian and his firm. I've always had a very positive relationship. I can say that in my dealings with your professionals, it's only been one of respect. So, you know, applicants get frustrated, perhaps that frustration obviously came out in that letter. I was not part of that and I really can't retract that or apologize for that.
I don't think the chairman's asking you to, I think.
Not you, if you could pass it on.
Pass it on.
As frustrated as Mr. Patel is, I can tell you, the board has been equally as frustrated to not be able to get traction and not be able to look at everything and make a decision. That's what -- No, I understand the frustration. We just can't get our arms around this.
Yeah. Well, all I can, all I can say again is I appreciate your professionals and the efforts they put into this application and Ed and I and Mr. Zuccone, Mr. Kacallis, Mr. Klein have, you know, tried our best to work with them and to afford them the answers for their questions. Can I say anymore?
I appreciate that, Mr. Goodman, and I will assure you that those statements made in that letter will not be a distraction to what goes on here tonight.
Appreciate that. Mr. Deck?
Yes.
And Mr. Deck, you were still under oath from previous hearings. Just for the record, if you could state your names, by your last name, please.
Edward Millen, there's a last, last name, Deck, E. C.
And you have previously qualified as an engineer. I'm assuming that your engineering license is just on effect. Very good.
Now, Mr. Deck, we have been in receipt of an April 4, 2019, Barbara Consultants' updated comment list and I direct your attention to the site plan. And the first thing that we need to confirm for the board is what is the final count on parking spaces? And when you give the count, give me the count and the tandem spaces as well.
The original or current existing number of parking stalls is 251. The site plan is from the beginning, last stated February 25th, revised, it shows us 257. So, two per week is the correct existing number per stall. The proposed condition after the improvements are made to the site, a total of 222 stalls are proposed, 45 of those are 10, part of that total is 10.
45 and a 222 are 10?
That's correct.
How many were of the 251?
I don't have that number.
That's okay.
But some were, though maybe because it happened down to the others.
Does Mr. Deck have the number of required parking spaces for this?
The number of required parking spaces submitted, the information to the board by Mr. Klein is, remains the same, total number required that we calculated by the spaces by need is 188 and we have a surplus of 34.
When you, excuse, when you say need 188, is that the equivalent of what the ordinance requires as a minimum mindset?
No, the board, the ordinance goes by the number of square footage of the building in most cases and in that respect, the number that was generally shown on my plan was 289.
289 would be required by ordinance per square footage.
Originally, square footage, yes.
And the 188 need, what?
That was based on the number of --
Well, we were talking, as you recall, about the adult daycare, about the people who come for the dialysis, that come in other cars that don't park here, so.
Okay.
Okay, Ed, there are a number of comments there and just moving, starting with number six, talking about the parking pavement, we're going to be repairing that, correct?
Yes, no objection to that comment. Certainly we'll make any improvements to the condition of the pavement because of the --
The same with the fence?
Absolutely, the fence, wherever there's a broken or misaligned type fence.
Okay, we're going to provide a stop bar and stop signs and DTS, the driveway open?
That's correct. Silverstone already on the plan, February 25th, plan, throughout the site, we need to make sure that all the stop signs are accurately placed and won't be taken, not struck into the stop line.
And can you give some testimony with regard to the changes that are made in order to get the trailer in and out of the medical trailer?
Well, sure. There's, sheet three of the plan set, condition three.
Again, Mr. Deck, what you're showing us, we have, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, it's provided.
Last year, Bob, it's February 25th, so that --
Very good, same place. We don't have to mark anything at this point.
Sure.
Does Mr. Deck realize that those sets that we got are not numbered or dated? I printed that out on my report.
On my plan set?
Yeah. I wish you could see that.
No, I still got that covered. But I, all my plans have that on there. I don't know why that would be doing on yours. Is that on the board members' plan set?
On the board by 17s, they're cut off.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, Ed, they were cut off when we --
I think that's, is that what you're saying?
Ah, okay. That's exactly what happened.
There are a couple, I mean, a couple have, a couple, so.
On sheet E35, we have posted, what we did, a short explanation, a response letter to this application. One thing I want to point out, on this sheet, also on the existing sheet, we switched the location of the ground floor and the basement floor, we're still in recognition of the board and made it easier to understand how the site was related. So, what we've done to the ground floor or surface floor, we've been, we've planned it to accommodate the trailer, we are changing the, we have angle parking here, the east or the north usually corner of the site is down in the 90 degree parking. We are going to eliminate the island in this last stall, number 64, I'm sorry. And that's shown on the traffic engineer's plans that were submitted, sheets one, two, three, and four, on sheet four. We have that hatch marked out. That'll make it easier for the trailer to negotiate the charges.
Mr. Deck, can you just squeeze that?
Well, sure. Thank you very much, sir. The other thing to change to the site to accommodate the trailer, is that we want the trailer to come in through the entranceway along the usually side of the property, I'm sorry, come in through that site and then come in along the westly side of the property and maneuver all escape turns and turning corners. What we have to do is open up this area here, which right now is approximately around 16 or 18 feet, so we made that 24 feet. That will accommodate the turning corners for the sized trailer that we're looking for.
Moving to the grading and stormwater management, there's a number of waivers that were requested. Will you go to those?
Sure. We show on the existing, also we talked about it first of all, the elevations of the idlets that are at the islands of the site. We don't show the connections between them. The site is not changing the square footage or area of the purpose coverage. We are in another unit or another story in this area here that currently is a concrete area. So, that is not changed. There's no change in the amount of the purpose coverage. So, we're asking the board for a sort of waiver because we feel that since there's no change that the site is, and the storage system is functioning, so there's no change or separation of the grading. Also for the grading, grading is not changed except in the area of the parking lot now is sanding there, so we're going to do that as well.
Just a quick question for that comment for number three under the grading and stormwater management. Is it too much to put, since you're going to have a drop-off near that proposed radiology dialysis ground floor, there's like that little note that in between buildings up more, right there? Based on the architectural plans, it looks like that's, that's where some of the that will be dropping off patients?
That is correct. That is going to be used as a drop-off area?
Just, just to show that it's in performance, could you add some additional proposed grades along there just to show that everything's ADA, especially if there's anybody with little chairs in that area?
Sure, we could show that on the part of the additions in the resolution.
And also on the subject of grading, we are going to grade in compliance with ADA requirements for the trailer, correct?
Yes. Now, we show on, I, I hope should, I guess, what I have, the comments I believe, by the final survival, Mr. Quado, the trailer on the back of the area here, that would be part of the final plan as we see.
Okay.
And that should be part of the traffic area.
And the final waiver, I believe, has to do with utilities. There's no added --
Right. We do show where the electric is coming in from off-site to the top phone pole. From there, it goes underground and services the building for that pump for the electrical. The gas, water service, and sanitary store, we don't have, there was no indication above grade for the, for those three utilities, but I'm sure, you know, they're there and they're working, functioning now.
But for that new, for that new building?
For the new building, the intent was, and I believe the architect did maybe speak to that, is that it will be all internally connected, that we didn't want it to be existing.
And Ed, in response to the request, have you prepared a waiver?
Yes, a new sheet is added. That will be sheet four. We show the isolation diagrams, the chemical intensity throughout the site. There is one light that is going to be repaired and all of the lights on the site are going to be replaced with algae dwelling, that's the type of diaphragm.
And finally, we will apply all the necessary agencies for this.
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Deck?
Gentlemen, anyone have any questions for Mr. Deck?
I just have a couple more.
Okay, Chris?
Comment 11 and 12 off under the site plan, was mentioned during the meeting, that more additional, you know, parking signs like on Saturday and Sunday along the other side of the parking lot, just so that when the truck comes in to top off the trailer, there won't be, there won't be any obstruction for them to get in and out.
Sure, we have, we can put on a plan, put a bench and tables, as you call it.
I think this was done the last meeting as well, but for the, all the landscaping to be warranted for at least a year along the frontage?
We would have a note on that.
Okay, and --
I have to, by the way.
Okay.
Perpetually, replaces name.
Okay. And the last, the last thing is adding the existing and proposed finish floor elevations onto the plan as well?
Right, and that would be, it's all related to the ADA.
Christian, at this point, are you speaking to conditions right now or are you speaking to implementing something else on the plan?
No, just conditions.
Okay. So, so far you have, how many conditions that you just asked?
Five.
Basically, they're in your report, right?
Yeah, they're in my report.
Right. But they are going to be conditions based on this application?
Yes and no.
So, you have five so far?
Yes.
Just to catch up on that, there's nothing in Christian, what you have to report and recommendations that we can't buy.
Other than the waivers that we're, we will buy by those conditions, so if there would be --
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Deck at this point?
With regards to waivers, I'd like to ask the professionals, I know it's about to us, but you don't see anything that would be detrimental to us accepting, granting those waivers right now based upon testimony that was --
The waivers requested by the applicant are shown on page 10 of my report dated the --
to the date of February, and they requested waivers from items thirteen, fourteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, and thirty, plus about storm training plans, rights of adhesions, utility lines, sanitary sewer lines, horsefly lines, the existing proposed contours, and landscape, can't go in the plan, show all of them. I see no problem.
I don't see any issue there.
Okay, in terms of advising the board that the waivers seem reasonable?
Yes.
Just a question to that. I think during past testimony, you heard that, you know, when it gets to like the storm line, uh, sewer lines and maybe the wastewater lines and so on, that there wasn't going to be any changes to any of that. But then I also thought, when we started to question about the addition that was going on, then there was discussion about, well, this might need to be moved and that might need to be moved. Did I, did I miss that? And so, we're granting waivers.
Well, he's stating what's the, some of the proposed utilities that they're going to be connected internally, uh, for the electric, gas, and sewer to the existing building.
Okay.
So the service is shown to the building, which is what the check list requires. And because it's there and existing, we didn't see a need to put it on the plans.
Okay. Well, I just said, I thought there was testimony that, at first, that's what was stated, but then it seemed to kind of change.
Sure, you're moving, you're doing, uh, various spaces, meaning that they've got to step up, but it would not have its own separate line out to the street. It would be through the building as it is.
One, one other question, which you may tell me, it's better suited to somebody else that's going to testify. Um, is it safe to say, based on the plans that you have, um, there'll be no other additions to accommodate the category of electrical plumbing systems on the site that aren't shown on here? And if they aren't, they would be shielded or at least presented to the board for our approval? So we had a, we had a discussion about, uh, fresh air vents and venting up the basement, and there was going to be further determination of what was needed. So just from, while you're here, you don't think you need any, it'll probably be the architect. Last thing that may be for you, because I think it would have to be placed on the ground. Um, there is a generator in the back right now, and that was for the, um, endoscopic surgery unit. This is going to be now a complete medical facility. Typically, they would want that same type of safeguard to their power systems. To your knowledge now, is there going to be an additional generator placed on site? And if so, where?
Yes, uh, I'm going to throw that up, because on, uh, our last meeting, we did have that shown along, uh, the air conditioning units, and that showed on the westly side of the building. But we are proposing another generator in the same area that the existing generator was shown.
I apologize for not noticing that.
That's.
Got it. Okay. That's a good point. Is there any shielding associated with it, or it's sitting there just like it's the other one?
Uh, the shielding is going to be placed, uh, in, uh, on recommendation of Mr. Brown, uh, around the dumpster area, for the post defensive, uh, Mr. Brown said that's required that, maybe, um, a basic type of structure around it, which we will revise on our plans. But around the generator, I, I don't know if it's really recommended that, but I think that needs the air kind of to, uh, circulate around it, so we're not.
And maybe that could be addressed with some landscaping.
Uh, certainly can, yes.
Very good.
Anyone else for Mr. Deck? Seeing none, Mr. Goodman? Oh, wait, hold on, Mr. Schreger.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deck addressing mine, something, or was somebody else? Look at. First comment with regard to the parking numbers, and I thought it had, uh, an ad like that. Uh, second comment.
Question about that, if I may, is, does the two eighty-nine require include the various vacant spaces that are now in the building? Uh, because the childcare was proposed, now it's away, so I believe that's now listed as a vacant space.
Well, uh, that's a good point. That would reduce the number of parking stalls required by square footage then, because there's probably the vacant space there. But that was.
Well, no, no, you have to provide.
Okay, well, then it's still in there.
Okay, so the vacant spaces are, my question was, the vacant spaces are included in the two eighty-nine requirement, which covers the whole square footage for the affected.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They, uh, there was a comment with regard to the number of pages. I think we addressed that mistake. Um, chain link enclosure around the dumpster.
Right.
Uh, I thought you had commented on that.
Yeah, I just, I needed comments about that.
And are we planning any additional trash collectors?
Uh, not at this time. Um, I, I guess that's, uh, we should have, have to resolve by the, uh, management of the building.
Does everybody in the building compare trash in those collectors to that?
Uh, I, I believe there are some medical based pickups that are done individually and separately, but I, I, from my, this, my knowledge and understanding, that is the central portion of the, um, trash collection.
So somebody on the fourth floor of the front's got to go down and back to block up the trash?
I, I guess it's done by maintenance crews, and I, I, I do, I feel that's, now the application is.
As a cracker, matter of fact, when the building fills up with tenants, there's going to be an evolution of how the garbage is picked up. And right now, it's big. So there is no problem. Hey, I don't know, I don't know how it functions.
Okay.
Okay, the, uh, there was a comment with regard to the perpetuity, with regards to the plantings, and we agreed to that. And, um, the traffic plan suggests the curved areas.
I'm sorry, back, back to the previous one. Uh, please discuss whether the plantings are drought resistant, drought resistant or watering provided.
Kevin, what did you?
I'm on page two of my supplemental dated the eighth of April. Not that one, that's the last full report.
Okay.
I made comments just on what was presented to us last week. His last sentence, the application is just whether the plantings are drought resistant or if watering is provided. I don't get it yet.
Uh, I, I, I would think, you know, most of the plants who, you test, I'm sort of, I, I would have to defer on that. I think when we do the revision to the landscaping plan, we can take a closer look and make sure that the plants that we're proposing are, um, compatible for watering and.
Yeah, the applicant indicates that he has contracted with a landscaper, and I, I absolutely, a landscaper will be tending to the watering of these plants.
But I, I would think that, you know, the fact that in perpetuity, that the place had to be replaced when they done, it would be who the, uh, management to make sure that they're either watered or had.
Which drought is this?
Not even that can answer, probably doesn't. And, um, let's see. I'm going to comment six, traffic plan suggests that the curb areas will be removed to allow the medical trailer full access to the rear parking lot. These plans should match when revised in the future.
Agreed.
Agreed. Uh, next comment is reserved for the architect. Uh, comment eight, the traffic plan adequately shows that the trailer will be placed and removed. It can be done, but as awkward as the vehicle must turn around in the backwater exit of property through the west driveway, which is the same one used to enter. Can the nine spaces in the front of the building be used as a trailer parking space rather than the entire rear lot? That would be much easier to access to the park. Uh, I think as we kick around, you know, various alternatives here, uh, right now, the applicant, you know, chooses to move forward with locating the, uh, the, uh, trailer in the location that we have depicted here. Um, may that change over time? I, I think, uh, Kevin, as we discussed it, we, we all agree, I thought, that this thing has to be seen in operation to finally see how it goes. We all discussed the confidence to get the, of the truck driver who's going to haul this thing in. Uh, so it may very well be the case that a change may be made in the future if it turns out that it's impractical and the guy is unsuccessful doing this. But, uh, I believe our consensus was that it is possible to get it in, it is possible to get it out without any, uh, damage done to the neighborhood. Uh, if it turns out that there's a problem in the field here, it's the applicant's problem. I think you and Christian have pointed out, you see, if we can accommodate this thing in the front, it might be an easier, uh, solution. But right now, uh, the applicant is choosing to locate it there primarily for its accessibility to the very, uh, uh, surfaces that the diagnostic medical is, is essential for. So, uh, in answer to your question, uh, we're gonna, uh, we're applying for it in its present location, but, uh, we, we take it under advisement that if it turns out that we have problems, that that front location, uh, may be a, a, a good alternative in the future.
Since the board should be aware, and the applicant, of course, that should it not work out in the back, the applicant has to come back for a revision to the site plan or amendment. It may be helpful to the board to know if the front is even possible at this point, because if it's not a possibility, because it doesn't work, well, then that's off the table, which means that the trailer goes away if it doesn't work. But if it is a possibility to put it in the front, should the rear not work out, at least the board would be on notice that this could be a plan being done along, up to the board.
Can it work, Mr. Deck?
It certainly has, it certainly has the, uh, length to fit the, uh, the tractor and the trailer in those, uh, stalls in front of the building in this area here. Uh, the only question is, how would those people access it from the different portions of the building? That's something we haven't really looked into.
I think ideally, ideally, obviously, because you're doing the radiation there and then you're obviously checking, you know, you're examining in the trailer, but ideally you want to just go back and forth this year, but.
That's correct.
It might make a lot of sense just to put it there and just go over there. I mean, it's Saturday and Sunday, you're going to be radiating all week, and then, you know, they're going to come on Saturday and Sunday to get checked again, so.
Yeah, again, I think we were going to.
I'm sorry, what did, where did you say to put, keep it where it is? No, put it in the front, because it's, it's more convenient in the back, but it's going to be really hard to get in the back. I mean, just.
Are you prepared to do that now?
No, our application is to locate where we put forward, and what I'm hearing from the board and from your professionals, is if we run into a problem and need to put it in the front, we need to come back.
Good.
That's very good.
We're simple enough. May I?
You may.
You had discussed about, uh, reducing the island to the width, uh, right, yeah, on the westward portion, there's that.
On the south end, the west, the southward portion.
So that the turning radius could be made, but reducing it all by a few feet.
Actually, it's a good, good reduction from the existing provision, because not only is the width of it, but the location of the parking stalls are much closer to the building. So, you, you know, you have a two-way aisle with the whole way through, uh, the parking stalls. So it's all in the width, it's all in the, also the start, location of the stalls.
I was almost going to say, make the suggestion of just strip it back and one, because if need be, if you have to come back and put the trailer in the front, you still don't have to physically do anything else later on. Um, and I know that that portion of the building had always in the past been a problem with, there was always a waterproofing problem with the basement, because that is the edge of the basement and the grade. And there was many, many waterproofing systems done to there. So if you do it, it may be advantageous to do it once and remove it to get it done once. That would be obviously your, you and your client's option, but this way, if you're going to modify it, it makes it so when you come back, if you had to come back, you'd really just be asking for it to be relocated and not have to really do any work to it. But that's up to you.
Just so I understand, uh, we're talking about the island to the, I guess, north of that parking area, the one that's fronting on down the road?
No, that, exactly, yeah, that one, yeah. Yeah. But again, that, I think would be probably, again, advantageous for you. So if you had to come back, you wouldn't have to do any work. And it would, it would make truck drivers' spot easier now, because we all see multiple curbs that truck drivers drive over, and then it looks like heck right there and.
Well, your suggestion actually is well taken, because we are going to do modifications in this area anyway.
Exactly. So if you're doing it, just.
We can just paint that as an island instead of having it as a curve.
As long as it doesn't cause any other traffic issue, but yes, it would make it set up to have the other option later.
What if it was just a malleable curve instead of?
Uh, yeah.
True malleable.
Yeah, just a. Do that, yeah. That would even be better to take.
Yes.
It's such a small island now. Notable, we need a little bit of room to get, room to get down. I mean, it's up to them, but, yeah, the painting might be easier.
I think we need to caution ourselves here about redesigning this plan and move forward with taking a look at what they're proposing, and if they would like to do that at a later date. I think their professionals can figure all of that out. Um.
Chairman, I agree with you. The only thing is, if they, we know that if you got a tight radius where a truck is going to ride over, you end up just seeing the divots in the thing.
I, I agree.
I'd rather have nothing there than something that failed.
But the truck isn't supposed to be there at this point with the.
Well, no, from, no, from the turning radius, it's from.
But a turning radius matters.
It's, it's, the guy has to be on money. And again, he should be. It's a very expensive piece of equipment.
Take it as a suggestion, maybe?
I'm looking to limit these conditions down to a war, you know? So, um, let, let's really explore that, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great.
What else we have?
Great idea.
Not, not. Anything else for Mr. Deck? Mr. Plainer?
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
The public has a discussion, or you want to?
I want to save the public for the end, and we'll, we'll do it that way. I want to just get this thing expedited as quickly as possible. Okay, who's next?
You're great.
Gary, do we have what we're putting up?
I hope.
Yes, uh, Rob, these are the plans that you sent to the board. Good. The one comment that I received in the revised, and then, uh, was that the revised architect plans are more helpful in explaining how the building works. Before we get into that, could you direct your.
Why don't we, why don't we swear, Mr. Secconi, if you could raise your right hand? Oh, I'm sorry. We're still on the road from the previous appearance.
This is the last time I have not changed my name.
If you could just state your name for the record and tell us.
Robert Zaccione.
Okay.
R, Z-A-C-C-O-N-E.
Thank you.
Robert, before you launch into your changes, there is a gentleman had a question with regard to any possible new things that were going to occur at the building screening.
Anything that is not shown that would be, uh, that.
Well, since our last meeting, and under the recommendation of the board members, we have added to our elevations an architectural screening, um, element that's on the roof of the proposed radiation addition to conceal any anticipated action units, et cetera. So we've added that. Uh, we have also eliminated, uh, due to conflicts, uh, justified between the parking spaces that I indicated on my architectural plan, uh, versus, uh, uh, traffic engineer clients drawing as well. So I took out all references to the, my parking on my drawings as well. So those two were elements with the main elements that I, I addressed.
And there were other changes you made to your drawings and, uh, recommendations?
Well, we, we had to continue to look at and indicate our trailer in this location. I can just help the board that there were a few factors that determined our recommendation at this location. One is the proximity and the accessibility from the patient. One is the proximity and the accessibility from the patients and staff that are in the trailer to the radiology suite. Perhaps there could be a sharing of staff, escorting patients by staff into the trailer and then out again. There is a separate waiting area for that purpose as well. So we thought that that was an advantage to that. And this is also something that we did pass by Department of Health for their approval for the location as well, all the factors, all the accessibility, et cetera.
Are there any changes made entrances and exits?
No, I believe everything was, is the segment unchanged.
The board have any questions for your architect?
Anyone here for any questions at this point?
All the professionals.
Oh, did somebody say something?
Just one real quick, minor.
Let's go.
A five?
A five.
The right-hand side of that sheet, is that the elevation facing Galveston Road?
This is the elevation facing Galveston Road.
Okay. Is that the stair elevator we're adding to the front of the building?
That was the stair and the elevator originally submitted to the state agencies.
Okay. Is that still part of this application?
The elevator and the stair were primarily to service part of the building program that is no longer allowed in this building, that being acute and subacute. So those two elements can be eliminated. They want to change it from what our plan had submitted to a DCA and DOH.
Can be or will be?
Can be and will change.
Okay. So the stairway and the elevator at the...
At the south elevation.
South elevation. So there will be no addition on the south elevation?
Yes, go right.
Anyone else for Mr. Zaccone? Seeing none, how about our professionals?
No, sure.
Chris?
Just one quick comment about the utilities. Will, can those be shown, are those shown on your plan?
They're not shown on my plan, but that's beyond my expertise. A lot of things beyond my expertise.
Okay, and I think we're good here.
Thank you, Mr. Zaccone.
Mr. Kukales, you also swore at the last meeting.
Yes.
Could you respel your last name and just indicate that you're still licensed as an architect planner?
Yes. And it's K O K K A R I S.
Thank you.
Okay. If you want to address some of your comments to the access of the medical trailer in and out of the site.
Okay. Listening to all this, I'm getting flashbacks. And by you, I had a CDL license, I used to run mail with my cousin who had a tractor-trailer. I used to run mail down Baltimore and up Albany and that. We also we did deliveries to already acne superpowers. Group one was, it was a killer. But based on my experience, and somebody mentioned the guy's got to be good, yes. And then based on my experience with the state, I've seen these units put in places that are really, very tight and hard to get into. And they're, I think, somebody mentioned they're very expensive and they have really very qualified drivers. That if they, when they come in and survey this, if they can't get in and out of there without hurting their equipment, they're gone. So that's my two bits about tractor-trailer.
I need another two bits. So you really need for you to explain to the board the essential nature of the equipment that's in this tractor-trailer, in this trailer, medical trailer, and how it integrates with...
Yeah.
It's a very CT combined.
It's combined. All right, it's an MRI and a CT.
Look, right.
Huh?
Right.
CT. They're basically very, very, you know, you go into the round room and it's x-rays that go through your body essentially to the plate in the back as it rotates around and it gets into a very, very fine field. And by being able to do it from different locations in that circle, they're able to develop a 3D image of actual cells within your organs. That's how crystal clear this comes out and they can turn it around and look at it. And I'm sure you've seen it on the History Channel or one of those channels. But that's what this is about. The units are very, very expensive. They're very expensive to maintain. No one buys them, they lease them. And they're constantly changing. When we design them to go into a building, we make a zipper wall, a wall that can come out very easily. We put them on the first floor, they take an immense amount of concrete and stuff to hold them. You've got to make sure they're absolutely level. The trailer will be level. It'll get smaller, they're all getting smaller as it goes by, but they still have to be big enough to put the human body through it. MRI has gotten smaller to the point where they have it for just your hand or your foot. The electronics are getting tighter, you can see everything quicker, you can see it in real time as a person's in there, you can start to see what the images are. And that's what this is about. It's about being able to diagnose things on a quantum basis, right down to the... To the cell, almost. You know, it's that's what it's about.
Jim, also, there was a comment with regard to the adult daycare in terms of the time it takes, how many people getting in and out.
Depending on how many people are in the van or the minibus or whatever they're going to be using, it'll take, with adult daycare, it will take five to 10 minutes for five to six people, eight people to get out, depending on their ability and the movement. And some of them, they'll come with aids and in the van as well to move. And there's, they generally don't, they set them up so that they know who they're picking up, so they don't have one van full of everybody that needs help in the same, you know, it's the same thing with dialysis. The dialysis unit is important for people who are going to some arm and wheelchair system.
Questions in the board?
Questions? Anthony?
Yeah. We've talked this for hours. My biggest concern is about the pickup and drop-off areas. And, you know, I think everyone's concerned, but how are we dealing with if there's two or three vans? You know what I mean? I understand how it is, but we have extra, you have extra spaces.
Okay. I'm not the...
I'm just saying, I just, how would you deal with that? Because I'm thinking about the patients now at this point.
Well, if it came up to that, you'd queue up, you know, just take a little...
That's what I mean, is there a room to queue up?
Side of the building.
Yeah.
They come around to queue up, they can queue up. Even on the Alvin Hill side, come around the corner, they'll queue up. And there are going to be people down there.
Right.
Making sure that people get off and the drivers will know where they're going.
Right.
And then after a while, it becomes a dance. Everybody knows, so shows up at this time and so-and-so goes at that time.
Right.
And they'll be, the dialysis unit especially, as they go on and they change over, they'll be dropping people off and peaking off at the same time.
Got it.
So...
Yeah, double, double way down. But I just, I just want to mention the drop-off areas.
In the beginning, it'll be, you know, they'll learn their dance, that's the deal. But they work very efficiently. You know, I've seen them in different facilities where they don't have as much room. There's one in East Orange that had a garage and they had like three of them in the garage. And it's an old, what, a repair shop, big shop, they put a dialysis unit in there. They bring them in and the good thing is they're out of the weather, but they sometimes would have two of them backed up waiting.
Yeah.
They wait.
So as long as that's all coordinated, you know, that's, because then that would, to me, that's what would cause things to happen outside of property.
The other reason is coordinated is this aspect, all right?
Right.
And the medical aspect. This medical staff is set up to treat people, they know who's coming, they're getting ready, they're getting everything done. So they're, they're on a schedule, they're on a time schedule. Now, you know, it's...
Yeah.
The only thing I can equate it to is my father had a lunch in that union and people used to come in for coffee and... So we had the coffees ready, we had everything ready and so this guy came in, it got to the point where if you came in, I knew who was coming and after you. So they're going to get into that and I've seen it work.
Okay.
And in larger facilities and smaller.
It's good, it's good to hear, thank you.
Mr. Kukales, can you tell me how many patients will be coming in today?
Overall? No, not right off the top of my head. Because I don't know how many he's going to be capturing for...
Hundred and ninety-two. Hundred and ninety-two a day.
Yeah, hundred and ninety-two.
Per day?
Yeah.
Is that the patients or trips? Are we talking about motor vehicle trips?
That's patients, that's not...
Patients?
That's patients. That'll be broken down into smaller trips.
On average, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ninety-two patients?
Yeah, and they're growing to that. They're not going to start out with that.
So that'd be the max or...
That's a, yeah, that's going to be the max for...
That's the max for the...
Yeah. How many dialysis units?
Take care of people?
There's forty dialysis units and then two shifts will have eighty people. But you'll have a lot of chairs empty for a long time, it depends on...
Right.
The population changes dramatically because we lose those people. You know, they're there one day and then three days later, they're supposed to come in, they're gone. You know, they're very...
Any other questions for Mr. Kukales?
Kevin?
Is there an operational or a medical necessity that the trailer must be in the back of the building and there's no other location for it?
My, from my experience as a designer and everything else, I would have it back there to be next to the unit rather than a trailer under the building.
You would see that to be better?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chris?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Kukales.
Mr. Chairman, actually, please, my witnesses, I reserve to a public conference.
Okay. There's some questions, maybe, I just have some general questions maybe for the applicant, like hours of operation. Would you...
That was covered in...
Was it? Okay, I'm good, that's it. So why don't we, shall we...
There's a chart, there's a chart somewhere that lists all the uses and their hours of days.
Is that the hours?
It's coming around.
What is this? This is only just for... Okay. Could I? I just want to make sure we're on the same page as to the relief that you're seeking. From what I understand, it's preliminary and final site plan improvement.
Yes.
The permit use, obviously, the mental variances that I see, referring to Kevin's report, that was...
No, wait.
Yeah, Kevin's report, that was right February 8th. The height issue is existing. It exceeds the permitted height of 40 feet, it is what it is.
It's not the...
Yeah. The other two variances are maximum impervious coverage, the maximum permit is 80%, you're at 91.5.
It is.
Pre... Okay, yes, yes, yes. And the minimum open space, the requirement's 20%, you're about eight and a half, and that's existing too. Other than that, is there anything else that I'm missing? Is that...
We're asking for the waivers and we're asking, because our need for parking is different than the required under the ordinance, we're asking for a parking there.
Right, and from what, 280?
29.
289 to 222.
Yes.
Re-existing, where is this? We're asking for the waivers and then, okay, I just wanted to clarify here so we're on the same page.
According to, on that page 10 that shows the relief, we would remove the refuse areas from screening. They have said that they would do that.
Okay.
Site radiation, now a layer, the light plan show one has been submitted and should have worn that favorably. I suggest a post-inspect, post-approval inspection.
Got it.
And sign illumination.
Can you show your illumination sign?
Oh, yeah, I don't see it.
Just a little issue on the sign, I just got...
I don't think there was a...
I don't have a good answer for you. My answer is...
Okay. There is a variance required. The board want to leave it with Christian and I or do you want to...
Why don't we do this? The gentleman is in the restroom and we could always come back to that.
Yes, sir.
And we could open this portion to the public and then I'll get back to it. Thank you.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter only? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to sum up?
Yeah. In summation, there's a lot of positive things that this application brings in terms of the medical diagnostic treatment that can serve the residents of our area, Union County in general. And I think those positives outweigh some of the difficulties that are presented in this site with regard to the medical trailer. I believe that in these times in an aging population, a lot of these new diagnostic techniques are essential to our population. And I would ask you to take that into consideration as you make your determinations and we ask for your approval and, you know, hope that this can be a good addition to the kind of weaponry.
Thank you, Mr. Kukales. Kevin, do you have anything that we should hear at this point that we haven't heard already?
Chairman, this is a site plan application. There are pre-existing variances, there are some newly created ones which have been addressed through testimony. It's up to the board whether or not this application meets the requirements of the site plan ordinance and whether you approve it.
Chris?
As long as they address all the comments that they said they were willing to do, I leave it up to the board for to adjust any of the waivers that they requested.
I'm sorry, Chris, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I leave it to the board to adjust any of the waivers they requested. Do you want to discuss further other than that? As long as they address our condition, do both our letters, I leave it up to the board.
For the sake of everybody here, can we hear with those conditions and those waivers one more time so we're all on the same page and the board could... Yes?
Can I ask a professional a question regarding...
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll take all the time we need.
Regarding the waiver of the drainage plan, since we're possibly entertaining waiving that condition, is it possible to get some type of confirmation that the drainage on-site is improper working water carving? Could we make that a condition of granting that waiver?
If the board wants it, that's...
I would then suggest, if we're, if that's within our purview, I would suggest to the board that we ask for that, that the drainage, since we're waiving any drainage in plan, that we get confirmation, whether it's a scoping, a camera, something, that it's, the system's functioning properly now.
So...
If we're going to waive the need for documenting the drainage, let's just make sure it works. The building's been somewhat vacant, somewhat. You know, just make sure everything's proper functioning and working.
Mr. Kukales?
Well, the mechanics of that is at the building department, the township engineer that's going to take a look at that, how's that work? I mean, it's, I just don't understand.
You're going to make a condition that we get a video of it, that it's...
And then the engineer can review it.
This board may impose any reasonable condition to...
Okay, let's see. Mr. Deck?
If you don't, if you don't mind, Mr.
Um, if you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Goodman, Mr. Depp would probably be the guy that could...
Do you think I took this in washroom?
Just to let you know, the guy that was in the restroom was back.
Uh, I would say that the best way to determine whether or not it's functioning is...
Excuse me, gentlemen. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Uh, is to be there when it's raining. I mean, that's really...
It floods.
Oh, jeez.
In the back northwest corner.
Well, that's where we have to look at that, yeah. And then we would have to make a regulation to address that.
Um, Mr. Goodman, maybe, would your applicant be opposed to having that scoped out?
Uh, no, well, we'll take a look at it. It's, uh, I mean, you're aware of the, the issue. He's pointing, the gentleman's pointing out where he thinks there's a flood here. We can take a look at that.
We can take a look at it, and maybe we could have input at the same time with the township engineer.
So we'll take a look at that, and, uh, you know, focus in on the issue of the flooding in that area.
Right. And I think it'd be good if we coordinated.
And we coordinate with the, with the township?
Yes.
With you?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll coordinate that, and maybe it's, I think it'd be done to alleviate any problems there.
I think that's...
So what we're saying, Mr. Goodman, is that you guys are going to take a look at it, you're going to coordinate with our town engineer, and then come up with a plan of how to remediate whatever is going on there.
Correct.
But it will be functioning.
Correct.
Okay. Um, in addition to that, Mr. Goodman, I think there was a question about the lighting.
Yeah, Robert, anything on our plan for illuminating the lighting? I believe our site plan indicates...
Could you step up, please, because we've got to get you on the mic.
Is that for the signage?
Signage, yeah. We have an interest in the signage proposal.
Okay.
And I would think that...
Come on up, sir, please.
Depending when the proposal, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Depending when the proposal for signage, uh, takes place, then obviously, my understanding is that we need to sign, a sign application. And that will be, that will be executed.
So it is part of this application, apparently, because you've submitted it in your site plan.
I, I am not prepared to be signage change.
Does it comply with existing township ordinances in terms of size, or don't we know?
Uh, it's, I checked the size, but there is no language opposed, so we don't know whether that complies or not.
So let me understand. We have a sign on the plan, but we don't know the size, and we don't know if it's in the name.
I, we have three signs shown on our plan. One is existing banners, type of sign is, um, I think the fourth, fourth level, that has been put down as part of the building. Uh, then there's a directory sign on the first level. Both of those, two signs, I'm not talking about the big one, two signs, meet the township ordinance status, or styles. And they're not, uh, illuminating even from the outside or any terminal.
Kevin, what's the ordinance on the sign?
The proposed signs in the site plan, this is reading from page seven of my eighth of February report, where number sixteen signage is addressed. I state that the ones that are proposed on the site plan do conform to the ordinance. Now, you're now mentioning the banner sign, that does not, that was not part of this application, so I don't know.
I don't know whether...
Is that the sign advertising it for rent?
Yeah. Assuming that's a temporarys.
Temporary.
It shouldn't become academic once it's...
It's not for a law.
The office was, yeah, what approved the project.
A law on the wild.
There is a time limit to temporary signs, typically it's thirty days.
Are you suggesting you may have received that?
I made no statement.
Okay.
So we got to figure out the lighting.
The thing is, you know that when we approve this plan, we approve the plan, and then something else is going to arise, and then I don't want to see this applicant suffer some type of delay again because of a sign. So I'm trying to get to a point where we could, get to a point.
Perhaps, Chairman, if this applicant were to state to the board that they will...
Just, just one second, something there.
That they will comply with the signed ordinance in terms of lighting, and allow that to be inspected by your staff, um, as part of resolution compliance. That might be...
Comply in terms of size and lighting?
Correct.
And then we're, then we're, yes, we'll comply.
We'll comply with that, yes.
Okay. So that's... So, so that's an closure there, okay?
Excellent.
Signs of lighting. Signs of lighting. Another one, though, why you want to take that from the... Okay, so, we've asked all the questions, everybody is comfortable, does that everybody, anyone else have any questions? For anyone? Okay, seeing none, let's, do what you have to say, Mr. Goodman.
I'm afraid it's a lie, let others have the first shot.
Do we want to go over the, you were starting to get the list of waivers? I thought maybe somebody had... I feel like somebody's biting at the bit for questions.
I just, it seems to me like narrowing it down between waivers and, 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 uh, the most recent technical review with the professionals, that most, most of the things have been checked off the list and were good. So unless I misunderstand, it seems like the biggest thing we're looking at is the parking variance. And relying on, you know, whatever the, I don't know, was it a seventy parking space difference? Um, are we okay with the, I would say ambiguity as to, um, how it's calculated? Because we're not going with the square footage, it's, it's a need requirement. And I think what we have to decide is whether or not they...
No, we're going with the square footage requirement because the ordinance requires we go with the maximum number.
Maximum number, right.
Need, it can calculate square footage, but whichever one is greater is the requirement.
So we're going from two eighty-nine to two twenty-two, that, that's the variance?
That's the variance.
Yeah, the applicant is relying on the new requirement, on, on what they calculate as need, right? That's what we're considering.
They're trying to convince us that.
We're explaining...
He's trying...
That's a support, again, the requirement is two eighty-nine.
That is correct.
Yes.
They're proposing two twenty-two.
And they're saying they only need one eighty-eight.
The need supports...
That's what I have.
The two twenty-two.
Yes. And in the one eighty-eight, they're stacking, at least in some of those spots. That's why we buy forty-five, thank you.
But does that take into account the type of use? Obviously, we're, we're thinking of it almost like everyone's pulling in parking, and this is a, people are coming in, eight, what'd it say? Eight people in a van? I mean, you know, there's a whole hundred and ninety-two people, they're going to be there an entire day. So I mean, doesn't that, that's to explain why they don't need as much for it.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it definitely is a dance.
You go to overlook, you'll have to see dance.
Okay, I think we all recognize that the, the parking, we all recognize the parking waiver, and how they're going to do it, and the reason why, uh, is that there will be people coming in in a van that wouldn't be driving, and they will be taking up all those spots. So why don't we go back to where we were before? Let's talk about the conditions that they're asking for, as well as the waivers. Let's list them out, and then, yes, sir. Okay, what I have in my notes, back in February, there was an indication that there would be no more child daycare. Was that now or ever? No more child daycare.
Without the West Day, come back to it, or...
Right, but as of now, um, no child daycare, if they want, they come back. Lighting plan was already submitted. Then, from tonight, all lights are going to be replaced by LED, but that's, that's on the plans. I think two of the major conditions are complying with Kevin's report, and complying with Christian's report, of which, in those reports, there are conditions, rather than regurgitating them again, uh, very, unless you want to highlight a couple. But those reports will be, will be, uh, will be required to be complied with. We have the south elevation, uh, the stairway and elevator are going to be eliminated, no additions on that side of the building. We have parking variance, which is, we'll set that aside for a minute. And then the three existing dimensional variances, we don't have to, we don't need to do those, they're there, and they're not going to be hurt. And the waivers, I know Kevin and Christian recommended that granting the waivers would be, would not be the end of the world, with the other condition that, um, that was raised about the drainage system, would be scoped out, would be reviewed, especially in that one corner where it obviously floods. Uh, and anything that need, need to be coordinated with the, um, borough engineer would be done, and with the point of being to remediate that, so it, so it functions. And if there's any issues, any of the construction needs to be done, you have to come back, tell us about it. Any, any, all signage complies with the, uh, with borough ordinances in terms of size and lighting. The other, the other thing to vote on, in addition to yea or nay with the conditions, would be the waivers that were set forth. And I thought I heard that they were no big deal, with, with the exception of the drainage, which needs to be looked at. And the, uh...
Did you talk about the scoping of the...
Yeah, yeah, it was on, uh, you have scoping online.
Scoping online, I'm not hearing this. Was there?
That was always true.
Was there anything else that, that Lou missed? Whatever, send me, assuming this is approved, if you guys can vote, it's scribbled down, the work conditions, in addition to what, the reports, anything that I think should be highlighted, to stand out, if I may, in the resolution? If I may. With the sensitivity of this application, I would like to hear them now. I'd like to have them listed now, I'd like them on the record, I'd like, I'd like it to be clear. The waivers and the conditions, so they're clear, and there's no misunderstanding, and then we can move forward, yea, nay.
Could I add more?
You could add as many...
Since there was question regarding the size of the dumpster area, and it's serving what is essentially a vacant building right now, the same dumpster area serving the full building, that if, I guess, the department in town that would have jurisdiction over it would be the health department. If the health department felt that there was an unhealthy condition with garbage, that they mandate that the garbage, the frequency be increased, so that it would be maintaining a healthy...
I think Mr. Goodman stated that there was, I hope that they were doing... I, I, I think that's the general, uh, requirements for everybody now. If you have the department that finds that your garbage is not being well-maintained, they sign it.
So then we don't need to... No, that's what we need, I, look, that's him. I'm just making a general house creeping on their part. I, I, I believe that, at the end of the day, this is going to serve the community in a lot of different ways, and I don't think they're going to shortchange the garbage situation. That'll shake out. That'll shake out. So, you know, good point, but I think this is, I think they can handle it clearly, not all clear, uh, mean care.
Yeah.
To your clarity.
Also, there's the state too, right? I think they're going to be too happy to see.
Okay, um, so who wants to take the helm here? Lou or Kevin, who's the... Chris can, I'll have his, his waivers, um, in, in his report, Kevin, he did the same in his, and, and the, okay. And hopefully, at the end of the day, he won on those. Make sure it's right, Mr. Goodman said this way, you have it.
In terms of the waivers, um, although it changed a bit, uh, the waiver for the...
Can I just interrupt real quick? I'm sorry. Because there's so many things going on at one time, when the motion is going to be made, we're going to refer to these three statements at that point, so we don't have to reiterate. Okay?
Very good.
Here you go.
The stormwater, uh, we agreed that we're going to scope that. Uh, that was originally asked for waiver, we're going to, uh, make that a condition.
That, that is only applicant's thing, not the town's.
Yes.
That actually we, watching note today, reporting...
Um, see, good. So that's number, that's paragraph two, Chris, in your report?
Uh, that was number two under grading and storm management.
So that's going to be covered by our, our, our scoping?
Yes.
Okay, so will that, that's not a waiver or anything? We would want some information on the storm service. Okay.
And then he asked for a waiver for, I listened to three twice, let's call the second three for number, uh, for the, a waiver for showing, providing, um, a system to decrease runoff under utilities, number two, um, a waiver for the showing of, um, existing utilities for the site. I believe that's it.
That's it on that side. Kevin?
Thank you, Chairman. In my supplemental planning report dated the eighth of April, um, open as conditions should be items, item three, which discusses the enclosure of the dumpster, that has to be supplemented according to the ordinance. Both comply with that. Item number five concerning landscaping, uh, they're going to show that they will be maintained in perpetuity and address the watering or non-watering of those. Item number six, the plan should be revised to show that the curved areas that are being removed are shown, whether they're going to be painted with a gore, we're going to be, we'll talk together. And in my report dated the eighth of February, um, open items include, page seven, item fifteen, there's a number of elements that are shown on the plans, but they're not explained. There's boxes and lines in various places. One turn out to be a generator, which plot the access aisle on the east side. So we'd like those to be reflected in the revised plans. Item sixteen, the signage, uh, they are going to conform with the ordinance in terms of lighting, but that should be in a revised plan subject to inspection for performance. Item eighteen, the parking lot striping is faded in some areas, should be repainted. And that's where I have it as of the chair.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman, um, I, I think I misunderstood. I can also add that other things that they said that they were going to comply with, in my book, I wasn't on my plan. I apologize. Under site plan, number six, comment six, uh, they said that they were going to, um, replace any pavement and disrepair or damage during, uh, during construction, to be to the satisfaction of, of the engineer. Number seven, uh, same thing with fence, anything in disrepair or damage will be replaced. Number eight, stop bars and stop signs, um, along the driveway openings along Galatin Hill Road. Number nine, the location of the proposed trailer to be shown on the engineer's plan. Number eleven, the additional, uh, no parking signs to be added, uh, along any part of the, where the truck turning template enters any of the spaces. And number twelve, uh, the reduction of the truck, of the islands, or I guess striping now, of the islands for the, that would need to be reduced or painted, uh, for the truck turning to be able to exit or enter the site. Number three, under the grading stormwater management, the additional grading between the proposed radiology and dialysis building and the new building to show ADA compliance. Number five, existing and proposed finished floor elevations to be added for the buildings. And that, that is it.
Okay, so I, I heard them all, and I understand them all from both of you. However, was there any timeframe given for the repair, specifically due to Batumis asphalt and the line striping? Or is that prior to the certificate occupancy?
All of the conditions, Chairman, will be post-resolution, which means that after the resolution is adopted by this board, depending upon the act on it this evening, before they even get to the construction department. Prior to the board officers signing off on the open site plan, that all these conditions have to be met. After your signatures on the approved site plan, then it goes to construction. So nothing physical can occur until all these changes are shown on revised, updated plans.
This point is not a confirmation. If you're going to repair the parking lot, you got to repair, these things are obviously going to be wrecked during the construction period. So wouldn't you...
Maybe you're misunderstanding, I think there's a misunderstanding here. They have... They have to be shown on the site plan that these things will be done. Mr. Cuero and I will say they have addressed all of these conditions. After your signature, then it goes to the construction department, and they ensure that the physicality, physically, these changes are made on the site. It's shown on plans, and then built.
Okay. The reason I ask that, I understand it goes that way, but in the past, I have seen and witnessed some establishments asking for a TCO while the pavement striping has not been done. And I'm really not looking forward to that.
There is no TCO until after the site plan has been signed by the board officers.
I understand. Now, we're going out to the permit department.
That's construction.
That's construction.
They have to comply by whatever those regulations are. That's out of our hands. Once we sign it, that's it for time.
All right. Kevin, the waivers requested on pages ten and eleven of your February eighth report, have we... You recommended that you didn't see any issues with granting those waivers, is that...
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, that would be on the board's to-do list. So, we've heard from Kevin and Chris. Did you have anything else to do?
No, they covered it very well.
Okay. The board. Oh, Mr. Goodman, you have anything else first? To the board. Now, would you like to...
So, we're talking about preliminary final site plan approval, dimensional variances that pre-exist, except the parking variance. The requesting go from 289 to 222, with 188 being the number that they're attested to as the required need. We have the waivers with the conditions that we've been discussing.
Okay. Let me just add this. We're about to... You know, I asked a couple of times for board members' input on which way and what they would like to discuss. So, as the chair, I would say that I think that Mr. Goodman rallied up and did a fantastic job here in trying to get all of this information to us in a intelligent way that we can understand it, and I thank you for that, Mr. Dak and everybody else out there. I think that the facility that's going to go here is going to be a good one, especially for all of us. Hopefully, we don't need it, but it's going to go on. So, I would put out there that a motion to... Did you have a question?
No, no. For me, I think, I'm just going to make a comment. You know, there's a lot of concepts, if I can use a word, to get a handle on with this particular application, because, you know, we've heard a number of times, well, you know, it's got to be up and running before we're going to know if this is going to work or that's going to work. So, that's kind of concerning. You know, it's not often that we have to deal with an application that we, you know, don't know a lot of exactly how it's going to work after the fact. But I can get beyond that. I guess my one last real concern gets down to the parking. I don't know how that can be addressed, but again, there's 289 required. They're proposing 222, that's short 67. They say they only need 188. They talked about the stacking, they need... There's going to be 45 stack. If you add this together with the 188, they really need 233 should be proposed, because I don't buy into 45 people are going to be stacking their cars. Once, the first time somebody has to tell somebody, you got to move your car so that I can get out, that's going to be the end of stacking. So, that's more or less my one concern about the parking. Aside from that, I don't have, you know, any real issues other than, again, having to grasp the... Or grapple with the, you know, the concepts of the actual operations of the facility. So...
I couldn't agree with you more. I think when I hear stacking, I start to shake a little bit, because you're right that does happen.
Mr. Chair, could I ask our lawyer something? The only thing that bothers me with the parking, actually, the stacking doesn't.
Doesn't?
I lived it for 15 years. It actually works.
Yeah.
Trailers getting in and out?
No, no, no. The stacking, the stacking actually works. Their calculations, we're going on their expert testimony that this is how it should work. We have a little trepidation of it, but it's a good concept and hopefully is. The thing that gets me is the vacant areas. There's a considerable amount of square footage that's vacant that has a general number assigned to it. The way this building is now going to be set up, orchestrated, however you want to describe it, when a new facility comes into it, since they are lacking in parking, is it... I'm asking, this is my assumption, but I'm asking a question. So, somebody's toenail clipping medical facility comes in, any other, anything else comes into that vacant space, are they in front of it? Because now it could affect that parking?
If it's permitted, no, because from what I understand, all the square footage, whether vacant, all the vacant square footage is already factored into...
Into that.
Into the 222. Now, I can tell the board, I mean, I heard Greg, I heard you, if this is approved and gets up and running, and the tenants come in, like the trash issues, which will be handled kind of like on the fly, and then everything else, if there are problems there, if the parking is absolutely overwhelming, I am assuming this applicant, if not our police department, but our applicant, the applicant will be back before this board for something. If they have to modify the parking, modify the building, do something with it, then that they have any changes to the site. If the grading turns out to be a mess, then they may have to come back in. But we are, I don't think it's taking a leap of faith, if the uses that go in there are permitted, so, and the parking square footage is what it is, it assumes that whoever goes in there, if the building's fully occupied, the need is 188 that it... If hopefully, nothing will go wrong, but it may be that this site down the road's going to need some tweaking, and if it does, we're here. Certainly, if they want a use that's not permitted, which would be kind of crazy, that would come to here. But, or if they want to blow out the building, change the footprint, obviously, go up higher, that would all be dealt with here. But as long as the uses are permitted, the square footage is supposed to handle the parking, supposed to handle the square footage of the... That was one of Kevin's first questions. So, it's factored in, and we'll see what happens.
Well, that's what they're asking us to do, to see what happens. And we're relying on the way they think the facility is going to run, and that's what we're going to have to rely on. The site is detached, it's away from anything. It's out, and if they do have overflow parking, people aren't going to park in Galatin Hill, they're just not going to go back.
Well, that's the...
And that's going to be, I think, it's not going to be on the street. It's not going to be on the street. That's what I mean, you know? So, no, you're not going to have that type of an overflow into, say, a neighborhood if this was done right in town here.
Near the street is 3,000 feet away.
Right.
If you can't park in your favorite restaurant's parking lot, you're not going to go back. That's the way it works, or you're going to lay a box.
There's not even a place to stop or stand. I mean, it's just, there's nothing.
Robert, are you okay with that?
Yeah. No, I just, I don't know, there's... We may see this again, hopefully not, but maybe down the road, something may happen, something may change. But right now, it is what it is.
Another thing I'd like to do, if I could comment?
How's the time?
I appreciate your desire, your interest in what you're bringing into Kenneworth. I personally have a personal connection in that building. I worked in that building for 15 years. I hate the way it looks. I hate the way the fact that when you drive down Parkway South now, there's this gray block there. There used to be lights on the building, it was active, it was vital, it was a building. I'm an architect. I like buildings that look nice. I'm glad you're doing something to the building. I'm glad you're doing it in Kenneworth. I'm glad the building's getting revitalized. I congratulate you, and I thank you for spending all this money in our town.
Eighteen, three.
So, here we go. Okay? If I say that?
Do you want me to do it?
Yep, go for it.
I will make a motion that the application be approved with the conditions and waivers previously outlined.
I'll second it. Okay. Motion, Mr. David, second arrive, Mr. Grimaldi, go ahead, please.
Mr. Paserno?
Yes.
Mr. Shoki?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Laddaby?
Yes.
Mr. Kleba?
Yes.
And Mr. Capar?
Yes.
Good job. Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome to our town. Okay. Next application is a zoning appeal, front yard fence denial. Thank you. I'm going to try to pronounce your name correctly. Setta?
Yes.
Saviani. Saviani?
Saviani.
Saviani. Can you please come up to the microphone and speak clearly and state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, the client and I have an ongoing business relationship, so I'm going to introduce myself.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Shoki. Do you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this matter, the testimony you're about to give shall be your truth.
I do.
Okay. And for the record, if you're against by your last name, I'm sorry.
S-A-V-I-N-I-A-N.
Okay. Let me tell you, just so we're all on the same page, we all know what we're doing, let me tell you why we're here tonight, so you don't have any expectations that we're going to be doing something different. Mr. Herbert, the zoning officer, and you apparently discussed the fence. He made a determination that part of it was okay, the other part of it was not okay. Okay. You, and he disagreed, and you appealed his decision. Correct so far?
No. It's not correct so far. We started off with an approval...
Well, okay, but we're here. Mr... Why we're here is not a variance. You're not seeking variance relief. What you're seeking is to have Mr. Herbert's decision reversed. That's the appeal that you filed under the land use law.
I am not aware of what I filed, just as I was not aware of where my mistake was when I did get the initial approval, only because there has been miscommunication throughout this whole ordeal, only because I am not familiar with... I've owned other homes, however, I had a husband who was from now, who dealt with all these things. So, I'm not a person that is aware of what exactly needs to be done as far as fencing goes. I did ask the town, I did call when I first decided to do this, and I was told to apply for permit, which is what I did, which was approved.
Okay. But you're getting into the case, which is fine, but I just wanted everyone to understand, unlike, like the case we heard before, we had to grant certain relief. The applicant was asking for permission to do certain things, we wound up granting it with a lot of conditions. Your application is under a different section of the land use law. You've asked for this board to consider all the facts and then reverse Mr. Herbert, so that whatever he told you, you couldn't do, or you couldn't...
Not necessarily, because when I read...
Kevin, am I offered?
When I read the ordinance of what I was allowed, it does state four feet. My fence is not all the same height. I have ended it where Mr. Herbert wanted, by the house with the eight feet. My contractor also had told me that I am allowed four feet past that, which is what I did. And it's only forceful sections of four feet, so that would be...
But Mr. Herbert said that he had to take that down, right?
Well, I have a...
All right. Why don't we... Why don't I just ask a quick question of you? When you got this thing started out in the city, okay, you first went up to the building department, and the building department should have or would have advised you that you had to go to the zoning application to bring your plan and show exactly what you were going to do. At that point, did he stamp that approved?
Yes.
So, you have an approved...
Yes.
...plan. Okay. So, I'm going to keep going with that line of questioning personally.
So, that what happened?
So, you got an approved plan?
I got an approved plan, I put up the plan, I paid the contractor. All of a sudden, I come home from one of my trips, and I find that I am in violation, a violation letter.
So, let's hear... Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Letter of admission.
Then I panicked, because I do want to comply with the rules of laws, and I was unaware that even myself on my contract, I did anything wrong, because I just did what I was supposed to do, that I thought. So, then I was told to call a councilman, Mr. Schlecke, I believe, whom I have...
Mr. Schlecke, yes.
For the house, said that he could not help me, so he recommended me to Mr. Clemente, who did not call me back for a little while, and then he told me to reapply.
Okay.
So, then when I reapply, it was not approved. So, I paid $2.25 for an application.
I think I got it up to this point. So, let's hear from Kevin, who's the planner, who seems to know a little bit about this case, okay?
Kevin, yeah, why don't we call Kevin and Chris. General, with regard to this matter, you swear the testimony and comments shall be the truth.
I agree.
And that was our planner and board engineer.
Chairman, it might be easiest just to go to the facts of the case, which are in my memo dated 25th of January, which the board should have on page three at the very bottom.
I'm assuming you have that, ma'am.
Do you provide a copy of that?
See, that's another problem, because when I was...
Ma'am, ma'am. Question is, did you receive a copy of this report?
No, I did not.
Okay. That's not good. Anyway, I just got a cover copy. I'll give her mine, but the facts of the case are laid out.
That should be your email.
So, on the back of your... People look at it.
Let's just check this out. Is this your email address, Miss Saviani? It's your name, saviani6sets at gmail dot com?
No.
It's not your email?
No.
This is what was on the application.
My name is not in front of this.
Was it six, set? Well, that was...
Yeah, that is. Ma'am, could you take a look at this? Is that your email address there?
This is, this is not.
No, of course, that is a colon between your name and email address. Well, ma'am, there's a colon between your name and the email address. Your name is not part of the email address. Email address for the record is six s-e-t-t at gmail dot com. Is that correct?
Six s...
Correct. Okay. I'm going to give my reports to Miss Saviani, so she has the benefit of that. I can pull it up electronically. I think we should start by taking a look at what I've listed here and make sure that what I have stated there is correct or incorrect. You want me to take a moment just to take a look at that? Because if we agree on the facts of the case, then it's up to the board to make a decision, because the zoning ordinance needs an interpretation on this. There are two conflicting statements in the ordinance.
Okay.
Would you like me to read just the facts of the case or the whole report?
I would suggest it should be the facts of the case, let's start there, because if the facts are agreed, we will use them across, and we can start from there.
This determination is only for this matter. Because usual, many times when you reverse zoning officer to zoning officer, that sets a precedent for future similar situations. And I think if we're going to recommend that the council do something with our ordinance, which they should do, either say no or yes in a word, whatever, then we should indicate that what we're doing here was specific to this and should not be used in the future.
Yeah, let me be clear. My opinion is based on the fact that the fence is up there.
Yes.
And now it would be a hardship to ask, you know, she's paid for the fence. She's paid to have it installed. And so there's going to be additional cost in addition to losing, losing out on the money already spent. There are going to be more costs to take it down. That's what my opinion is based on. If you were here asking for a variance to put a fence in a front yard, I have a different opinion.
Okay. So. Yeah, I wanted, go ahead. Okay, I went there. I checked it out. Now, I don't personally like the white fence, and I can imagine your neighbors not. I thought to myself, what if every neighbor on that street put that white, four-foot white fence all the way down? It'd look terrible. Then I said, I can understand why they wouldn't want it there. But then I realized that where you live is, the house next to you is a quarter house. So basically, there's a back. That fence is not a side, it's not one side to another house side. It's your side to somebody's backs, somebody's back. So literally, if they had put the fence on their side, you know, in their backyard, probably wouldn't be having this discussion. But you put it there, and it's, so you're abutting a backyard, not another side. But down the street, you know, the other people, they have driveways and have these little islands and things, like side to side, it would look horrendous, a white fence. So I can understand where they're coming from, but your situation is you're actually going up against a backyard, not another side. So are we pretty much clear?
I would only ask if we asked the engineer if there's any supervision or any other things beyond that.
Site trial.
Sorry, site trial. Couldn't figure, couldn't get that word out.
It's set back to the 20-foot setback, isn't it? I mean.
Yeah, it's set back to the setback.
Setback, so I don't think that would come into play.
So we're dealing with ambiguous ordinance fairness?
Yeah.
I think it's too far back. I think it's too far from intersection.
I couldn't hear you, Chris.
I think it's too far from the intersection to like, any.
Okay, yeah. All right. Do you want more?
No, I was just gonna say, Mr. Ray was saying ambiguous, and I use order of biggest, I think as well, but it's also contradictory, so I think.
Contradictory, and it's like a movie of hardship, this house as well. Okay. Did we hear enough? You have nothing else to say, correct? Okay. No. Okay. You're smart. Don't snatch feed from the jaws of victory. Okay, take the floor.
Okay, I will make a motion to overturn the zoning enforcement officer's decision on the fence based on, you know, what was previously stated.
I'll say.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Frank.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fasarna?
Yes, it's the reverse. Yes, it's the reverse, yes.
Mr. Fasarna? Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Gamaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Fladavy?
No.
Mr. Colella?
No.
Mr. Capar?
Yes.
Okay. Five to two. You got the fence. But I will, I will tell you this. I will tell you this, and I just want to state this for the record. Again, I think Bob Herbert, the zoning officer, didn't do anything wrong. He interpreted, he interpreted the ordinance the way he felt it was supposed to be read. He read it a different way, so this has to go down as something that we need to clean up as far as this board is concerned. So, yes, the fence can stay, but I don't think Mr. Herbert did anything wrong.
Thank you.
You will bet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So true. You guys, if I just put up my fence illegally, then I came over here, I have everything okay. I'm gonna run out and put a fence up. I actually swallowed more.
Because the ordinance says that you can put up a fence.
And these guys, that's a different time. Plus, the code ain't changed, you see this. Hey, Mr. David, she came up here, she paid a lot of money. Okay, Justice, Justice. Mr. Shelby. You know. Yeah, sorry. Okay, we're still in session, folks. Let's see if we can get it together. Here we go. Are we all ready?
Two.
Yes, sir. Okay. Application 375, Bowright Realty. And are we joining these two gentlemen, Lou? Would that make sense? We're off and handling to give, no, we don't, but this seems to be a.
And application 376 and 2-20, Bowright Realty.
My name is Gary Falcon, FBI KIM. I'm with the law firm, Don, I'm a mentor, you've seen Terry Kelly in that marketing. As indicated, this is application for two properties, 20 Bowright and 130 Bowright. I have two witnesses to present the scene. This is Mr. Joseph Savino of the tenant, and Michael Lanzema, the engineer planner.
Mr. Falcon, for a moment, Kathy, I'm assuming you noticed the application on.
That's right. We had, we had a minor issue with the radius list, but that worked out fine. I think Mr. our assessor indicated that it was accurate, so we're good.
Okay, good. So, just to give you an overview of the application, I had submitted a statement of principle points, and I think if we review them, we can really put what we're doing in perspective here tonight. So, on April 13th, 2017, this board approved Resolution 356 and 1DS 17, which granted preliminary and final site plan approval on 20 Bowright wood variances for construction or warehouses. And that building has been constructed. In December, 20 Bowright executed a lease agreement with a company called Alpha Flight U.S. Inc. for $34,074 square feet of the building for use as a flight kitchen facility and related uses. Alpha is a related entity with Emirates Airlines. The use is, was described in a letter dated February 8th, 2019, from Mr. Savino, who is with us tonight. In order to accommodate the Alpha requirements, we require an amendment to the preliminary and final site plan to add two loading docks and a trash compactor and interior building modification. Essentially, it's a mezzanine. And that use necessitates some variance approvals before the board, which Mr. Lanzema will testify to. There's, the separate application on 30 Bowright is somewhat related to the 20 Bowright application because 30 Bowright and 20 Bowright, which has common ownership, entered into a lease agreement for the use on 30 Bowright of 20 parking spaces, which are available, for the use for overuse essentially for the Alpha, Alpha tenant. In addition, there's some additional parking, as long as we're doing this, that the, some of the existing tenants at 30 had asked for. So there's an additional eight bank spaces that will be created, that is spaces that were previously banked, that we're going to create in actual spaces. With respect to 30 Bowright, there were at least three prior resolutions that dealt with the existing tenants there. The building at 30 Bowright is full. It has four, three tenants in it, and the resolutions were submitted with the application. So, I had also submitted on February 13th, Mr. Herbert, who requested letters from each of the tenants at 30 as to what their parking requirements were to make sure that there was adequate parking availability for the use of the 20 spaces for 20 Bowright. And part of that submission, including a chart, which was employee and parking summary, which sort of crystallizes the amount of the space, the maximum employees per shift, the existing tenant worth approval for the prior resolution, and what was necessary for the existing tenancy. So, unless the board has any questions, initially, I'd like to call Mr. Savino.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Falcon? No? You guys? Excuse me, Mr. Falcon.
Gentlemen, with regard to this application, you swear the testimony you make, you shall give the truth.
I do.
So, board engineer and award planner.
Did you have questions, Kevin?
No. Were you just raising your?
I definitely just wanted to be sworn.
Were you sworn, Mr. Savino, please?
Yes, could you raise your right hand with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you shall give, show me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name, Ms. Bayer, last name, please?
Joseph Savino, S-A-V-I-N-V-I-T, Delano.
And will you be offering testimony? Will the testimony be joint testimony for both 20 and 30?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Could you give us, what is your position with the tenant Alpha?
I'm the chief monkey in office of Alpha, the U.S. North America.
All right. Could you tell us what the business of Alpha is?
Alpha is a sister company of Emirates Airlines. We do catering throughout the world. Right now, we're in, we have 64 catering units throughout the whole United, the whole world. We have six in the United States right now. That was three R, three R, we have three R in operation today.
Okay. And this is a, another facility, is that correct?
Facility, correct.
And this facility is to service Newark Airport?
Newark Airport, correct.
Okay. And just generally, what, what happens within, when this facility gets built? What actually occurs there?
We have 24-foot high-low trucks that go to the aircraft, the care of the aircraft, bring the equipment back to the kitchen, cleanse the equipment, restock the plane for the next flight, bring the equipment back to the aircraft.
Okay. And what hours, what are the hours of operation and days of operation?
There are usually two shifts, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and depending on the flight schedules, that's how we operate.
And could you describe the purpose of the facility and the need for the mezzanine?
Well, we have two kitchens, one for halal, one for halal, one for western food. We have, because the airlines require one month's worth of supplies in the facility, we usually, each airline has 30 pallets of material. We require a lot of warehouse space, so the mezzanine space is really for employee cafeteria, employee locker rooms, and some offices. And also, a big presentation room. We do presentations to the airlines, requires a big spread of food, four people or five people come in from the airline to taste it through four cycles, so it's, it's a big, it's a big spread.
And you do catering for other airlines, other than Emirates?
Yes, only four and five-star airlines. We don't do, we rarely do a domestic airport.
And could you give us the number of employees per shift and the maximum number?
The usual employees per shift, depending on the airline, would be nowhere near about 30 per shift, and it's usually about four trucks usually in that shift as well. And I'll see Newark is not a major, it's a major international airport, but it's basically United Airlines. There's not much international traffic like JFK. So there's not, there's not much international traffic. They will be going after other than Emirates and a couple of other four-star airlines.
Okay. And what's the maximum number of people that you intend on all shifts that we operate?
About 30 per shift, two-eight-hour shifts, and there'll be at night, there'll be a skull included. There always will be people in the building, but the graveyard shift will be about four or five people.
And the number of guests at any time?
Four to five tops usually, come in from airline to taste it.
All right. Now, with respect to the parking.
Yes, I'm sorry.
With respect to the parking, the lease provides that you have 30 spaces on-site, and there's an arrangement with the landlord for 20 spaces at 30 Bowright, correct?
Correct.
All right. And is that parking, that number of parking spaces adequate for your usage?
More than enough.
Okay, and that would include shift change also?
Correct.
Do you have any experience at your facility with employees using carpooling or public transportation to get to work?
If it's family members, which sometimes we do get, they do carpool. Or, and I understand, in some kitchens, we do a bus stop right in front of the facilities. I know Bowright really is on a bus stop, other than Route 22.
So the 80 people you would be hiring from the local area?
Absolutely.
And do you have occasion to get large trucks, tractor-trailer trucks?
We get deliveries maybe two to three times a week. Usually, it's a Michael Lewis freezer, truck of frozen foods, or the airline could send a C container in maybe once a month to unload their airline equipment. So we have a bonded storage area. The material comes in duty-free, because it goes into a bonded area, and it goes out to the aircraft duty-free, there's no tax. It's like a bonded warehouse.
So how many trucks do you anticipate having of your own?
Of my own, we anticipate four to six high-low trucks. To start with, four, maximum of six high-low trucks. They're about 24 feet long, regular big straight jobs, that are refrigerated high-lows. All our trucks are refrigerated.
And high lows meaning they go up to the?
Scissor lifts, the scissor lift truck that you've seen at the airport. All brand-new in my day.
Could you tell us, why is there a need for the two additional loading docks?
Because we don't like to cross-contaminate our food, so we have the, the two loading docks with the 30, the 30 R self-contained compactor will be for the dish area. The dairies will come into the left side of the building, through the back of the building, through the left side, and the right side's only for the outbound. We don't like to cross-contaminate dairies with plane.
So if we don't approve the application, and you don't get the loading docks, you'll have cross-contamination?
It's a good selling feature for the customer. We really would see the Emirates.
Could you describe the need for the trash compactor and how that operates?
Well, trash compactor, because of the, we're in the woods over there, number one, there's birds. So it's a, it's a, it's a brand-new self-contained, I don't know if you're familiar with compactors. It's a self-contained portable compactor. There's, there's a door on it, you see a fair bit of traction, you close the door, you push the button, it compacts the waste, and once it's filled, it goes to the local transfer station. We don't want any open containers, because it brings on raccoons or rats or whatever, or birds.
Are there any order emissions that come from the, from the facility?
No, not at all.
How does that?
Well, you can't, you don't see, it's, it's stacked, it's 32-foot high ceiling, coming through that building. We don't smell anything of JFK. And we have a 20-foot high ceiling. In Nashville, we have a 60-foot high ceiling.
Really?
In Boston, you know, it's rare smells. It's not like a restaurant.
Is there venting to the outside?
Yeah, venting up, up the roof. Yeah, it's 32 feet in the air, in that building.
They have the old exhaust system, obviously, the hood and the exhaust and all that, just like a restaurant, okay.
Yeah, this building, we recruit all, the budget on this building is about $6 million in shrooms inside.
Okay.
Are there any questions, Mr. Savino?
Is the food made from scratch there, or is it kind of like pre-made somewhere else and kind of like, kind of put together?
We're a scratch kitchen, unless the airline nominates a frozen food product.
Okay.
Okay, so the most airlines that we deal with do not have frozen foods.
Okay.
I'm not going to mention the other carriers.
So you're seriously a scratch kitchen?
Yes. That's how, that's what, that's what I was as a, before Denada, I merged with Denada, with scratch kitchens.
So the people that you employ there, you will have chefs there?
Absolutely.
Out of the 80 employees, how many are chefs?
Usually, on a shift, you'd have two chefs and one line cook. It's not going to be a big production facility. Again, we're not going after the mass market, we cater four and five-star airlines.
So the majority of the employees would not be categorized as like minimum wage-type jobs?
No, no, even the drivers will make $24, $25 an hour. We pay a premium, because we want, we, we're a premium service company. The airlines we deal with will pay for that.
And I'm sure, because you're dealing with the airlines, you would have to have clearance so those drivers come in and out.
Oh, they're, they're sighted, they're, in fact, we do background checks on everybody. Plus, you need, you have to get FBI backgrounds. If you can't enter the AOA, increased operations area, plus you get FBI clearance and, and CBP, orders and customs clearance.
So everybody coming into your facility and going into the airport will have, have had a background check and have clearance?
That's a standard procedure with our company.
I like it. Very good.
Truck parking, the high lows and everything, where are you going to store this?
We have about six days, and there's only six trucks. And there's three satellite vehicles, like small Jeeps that we use, that we use, because this is a business of customer service, right, that goes with the high-low trucks to the aircraft.
So no, no on-street-on-Bowright parking?
No, there's plenty of parking in the back room. Again, our fleet's not a big fleet. Six will be maximum.
We had, we had troubles recently with tractor-trailers parking.
We have no, we have no.
Not yet. No, just letting you know, and so we shut that down, so.
No, we have no tractor-trailers, okay. Both standard high-low trucks, 24-foot high-low trucks. And again, at Newark Airport, there's no 380s, because of the double traffic points. I like bigger trucks there. Newark doesn't have any 380s.
So you only provide food to the airlines? You don't provide food on the side to stores or?
We do do a commissary business as well, not to stores, to the grab-and-go, I don't know if you fly out of Newark, Terminal C, CBO Express. We do sandwiches and wraps to CBO Express.
Gotcha.
So we'll, we'll do some of that business at CBO Express in Newark.
Nothing out of this building, though, that, because the.
Some of the other stuff, absolutely.
No, I mean, the people can't drive up to your building.
Oh, no, 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 no. We're a secure, we're a secure DSA facility. We have 60 cameras on site. There'll be fences, no one's going to be allowed in the building. If someone comes in, we know about it.
You're an extension of the airport, more or less, with the city.
We have, it's our security.
What's the status of, of the construction of the building? At this point, the reason why I'm asking is because there were some conditions that were required for the approval of the building that.
The construction's all done.
Okay, because I was going to say, there's supposed to be some things haven't been done, and I haven't seen them done.
We haven't done anything to the building yet.
No, I'm doing the out-pex tour of the building.
I haven't done it. We'll do it then. Okay.
Any other questions, Savino?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, that's fine.
Chris? Very good, thank you.
I put the four-foot fence outside.
Only if you put the stack table up to the floor.
Add to the 15.
Of course, on the night that, on the night that we're going to be late, you can come in as sick as a dog, right? You're not the top of your game?
Mike, it seems suffering over there.
Listen, get to swearing, look at you. Regarding this application, do you swear the testimony, show me the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and swear your last name, please.
Sergeant Michael Lanzema, L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal in terms of Casey Reteller Incorporated, 258.
Mr. Lanzema has been in 20 years testing.
And you're, you're here as a engineer and a planner?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the application you have before you, and what I have up on the easel, is sheet number three in your set of plans, with the last revised date on March 29th, 29/2. And what that depicts, it shows you the relationship between 20 and 30 Bowright. 20 Bowright is on the right-hand side of the exhibit, on the north side of Bowright Avenue. It's about a two-and-a-half acre site. To the west is 30 Bowright, at determinist of Bowright Avenue. It's a 5.6-plus acre site. So, the gist of what Savino was talking about is the need for the loading bays and trash compactor area in the northwest corner of the building. And what these two bays will do, the two easily bays, will be provided for the scissor trucks. And they will bring the material in, waste in, trucks will be unloaded, the waste will be dumped directly into the compactor. In addition to the fit-out for tenant space number one, we are also building about 12,000-plus square foot mezzanine in that building on the southwest side. And Mr. Savino pointed out, it's primarily for employees, cafeteria area, office space, some conference rooms and things of that sort. As a result of the addition of the sawtooth pattern that you see on the northwest side, the building's square footage goes from 55, 55,062 square feet to 55,212 square feet, or adds about 250 square feet. In addition, we have repainted some areas to allow for the trucks to maneuver in and out of the site. So the block coverage went from 88,250, which was 79.8%, where 80% is permitted in the zone, to 8.92% for 89,473. That's a variance request of 1,020 square feet. So relatively de minimis. In my opinion, that, that variance is into a C2 variance, because it allows for the operation of this tenant to occupy the building and advance the goals and objectives of your master plan to bring in the types of businesses that are high-quality and also provide for jobs for the residents of the tenant. To offset that additional coverage, we had part of our regional approval was a detention facility located parallel to the front of the building. That detention system was overdesigned to begin with, so the additional 1,000 square feet would be mitigated by that existing detention facility. As part of, part of our initial submission for this application, we did not submit all of the original drawings from our approval. We will be complying with those. And by that, Harbor Consulting had a number of questions about utilities, lighting, and things of that sort. So, the, the plan is to complete the building in accordance with the prior approval. There's no proposal here to shred any of our, jerk any of our responsibilities. What has happened at this point, there's a transformer proposed on the southwest side of the building. We held off on that because we wanted to see if we could get approval, because this particular tenant has a much greater electrical demand than just a straight warehouse building. And we also did not pave that suddenly portion of that driveway yet. So, those are a few of the things that haven't occurred yet. Also, on the site, we have 17 cars along the west side. I believe there were 20 cars on the east side. There's also the ability, and what was part of the approval, there's grass pavers that are going to go in there, that will accommodate additional parking. That has not been installed yet either. The refuse area has been installed. On the original plan, this refuse area was to serve the entire building. Now, this refuse area will simply serve what would be what we're calling proposed tenant space number two. This, this compactor will serve the remainder of the building. To facilitate parking for this tenant, as Mr. Savino pointed out, he needs some additional parking. So what the landlord did, who also controls 30 Bowright, is he earmarked 20 spaces along our common boundary line that would go towards the, the tenant, the new tenant. So, to compensate the existing tenants in the building, we are installing 16 spaces along the east side of the building, and we're installing another 17 spaces in the northwest corner. So, what we, what we're doing is bringing the parking count up on 30 Bowright from 135 spaces to 163 spaces. For 20 Bowright, we have the 67, or excuse me, the 47 that we approved for, plus the 20 at 30 Bowright, gives us a parking capacity of 67. Interestingly enough, there were the existing tenants, we were here many, many months and years ago, for a parking variance for 30 Bowright, where I believe it was approved for 141 spaces.
Could you tell us why is there a need for the two additional loading docks?
Because we don't like to cross-contaminate our food, so we have the two loading docks with the 30-foot self-contained compactor will be for the dish area. The dairies will come into the left side of the building through the back of the building, the left side, and then the right side is only for the outbound. We don't like to cross-contaminate dairies with clean.
So if we don't approve your application and you don't get the loading docks, you'll have cross-contamination?
It's a good selling feature for the customer. No pressure. We're really good seeing in Emirates.
Could you describe the need for the trash compactor and how that operates?
Well, the trash compactor because of the, we're in the woods over there, number one. There's birds. So it's a brand-new self-contained, I don't know if you're familiar with compacters. It's a self-contained portable compactor. There's a door on it, so you throw the trash in, you close the door, you push the button, and it compacts the waste. And once it's filled, it goes to the local transfer station. We don't want any open containers because it brings on raccoons or rats or whatever. Or birds.
Have there any odor emissions that come from the facility?
No, not at all.
How does that happen?
We could, but you don't see, it's stacked, it's 32-foot high ceiling. Going through that building, we don't smell anything of JF category. And then we have a 24-foot high ceiling. In Nashville, we have a 62-foot high ceiling.
Really?
And Boston, you know, it's rare smells. It's not like a restaurant.
Is there venting to the outside?
Yeah, venting up the roof. Yeah, and it's 32 feet in the end in that building.
They have the whole exhaust system, obviously, the hood and the exhaust and all that. Just like a restaurant, okay.
Yeah, this building, we've got the whole, the budget on this building is about $6 million of trucks inside.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Savino?
Is the food made from scratch there or is it kind of like pre-made somewhere else and kind of like, kind of put together?
We're a scratch kitchen unless the airline nominates a frozen food product.
Okay.
Okay, so the most airlines, as we feel, do not have frozen foods.
Okay.
I'm not going to mention the other carriers.
So you're seriously a scratch kitchen?
Yes, that's what I was as a, before Denada, I emerged with Denada, with scratch kitchens.
So the people that you employ there, you will have chefs there?
Have some.
Out of the 80 employees, how many are chefs?
Usually on a shift, you'd have two chefs and one line cook. It's not going to be a big production facility. Again, we're not going after the mass market. We cater four and five star airlines.
So the majority of the employees would not be categorized as like minimum wage-type jobs?
No, no, even the drivers will make $24, $25 an hour. We pay a premium because we want, we're a premium service company. The airlines we deal with will pay for that.
And I'm sure because you're dealing with the airlines, you would have to have clearance so those drivers come in and out.
Oh, they're sighted, they're, we do background checks on everybody. Plus you need FBI backgrounds. If you can't enter the AOA, Crest Operations Area, which you get FBI clearance and CBP, Orders and Customs clearance.
So everybody coming into your facility and going into the airport will have had a background check and have clearance?
That's a standard procedure with our company.
I like it. Very good.
Truck parking to high lows and everything, where are you going to store them?
We have about six bays and there's only six trucks. And there's three satellite vehicles, like small Jeeps that we use. This is a customer service, right, that goes with the high-low trucks to the aircraft.
So no on-street, on Bowright parking?
No, there's plenty of parking in the back room. Again, we're not a big fleet. Six will be maximum.
We had troubles recently with tractor trailers parking.
We have no.
Lafayette. No, just letting you know, and so we shut that down.
No, we have no tractors at all, so. Standard high-low trucks, 24-foot high-low trucks. And again, at Newark Airport, there's no 380s because of the double drop points, unlike the bigger trucks. Newark doesn't have any 380s.
So you only provide food to the airlines? You don't provide food on the side to stores or?
We do do a commissary business as well, not to stores, to the grab-and-go, I don't know if you fly out of Newark, Terminal C, C-Bo Express. We do sandwiches and wraps to C-Bo Express. So we'll do some of that business for C-Bo Express in Newark.
Nothing out of this building, nothing, because of the.
Some of the others, absolutely.
No, I mean, the people can't drive up to your building.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, we're secure, we're secure TSA facility, we have 60 cameras on site. There'll be fences, no one's allowed in the building when someone comes in, we know that.
You're an extension of the airport, more or less, with the.
Yeah, it's our security.
What's the status of the construction of the building at this point? The reason why I'm asking is because there were some conditions that were required for the approval of the building that.
The construction's all done.
Okay, because I was going to say, there's supposed to be some things I haven't done, and I haven't seen them done.
We haven't done anything to the building yet.
No, I'm doing the apex to the building.
I don't know. We'll deal with that. Okay.
Any other questions, Savino?
Yes, sir.
Raise your red flag.
Chris?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I put a four-foot fence outside.
Only if you put the snack table up to the floor.
Add the 15.
Of course, on the night that, on the night that we're going to be late, you come in as sick as a dog, right? You're not the top of the game.
Mike, it seems soccer over there.
Listen, get to the swearing-in, look at me.
Regarding this application, do you swear the testimony shows you the truth?
I do.
Just state your name, explain your last name, please.
Michael Lanzafama. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey &amp; Keller Incorporated, 258.
And you're here as a engineer and a planner?
Correct.
Okay.
So the application you have before you, what I have up on the easel, is sheet number three in your set of plans with the last revised date on March 29, 2012. And what that depicts and shows you, the relationship between 20 and 30 Bowright. 20 Bowright is on the right-hand side of the exhibit, on the north side of Bowright Avenue. It's about a two-and-a-half acre site. To the west is 30 Bowright, at the terminus of Bowright Avenue. It's a 5.6-plus acre site. So the gist of what Savino was talking about is the need for the loading bays and trash compactor area in the northwest corner of the building. And what these two bays will do, the two east-of-the-bays, will be provided for the scissor trucks. And they will bring material in, waste in. Trucks will be unloaded, the waste will be dumped directly into the compactor. In addition to the fit-out for tenant space number one, we are also building about 12,000-plus square foot maintenance in that building on the southwest side. And as you pointed out, it's primarily for employees, cafeteria area, office space, some conference rooms and things of that sort. As a result of the addition of the sawtooth pattern that you see on the northwest side, the building square footage goes from 55,062 square feet to 55,212 square feet, or adds about 250 square feet. In addition, we have repainted some areas to allow for the trucks to maneuver in and out of the site. So the lot coverage went from 88,250, which is 79.8% or 80% is permitted in the zone, to 80.92% for 89,473. That's a variance request of 1,020 square feet, so relatively de minimis. In my opinion, that variance is going to a C2 variance because it allows for the operation of this tenant to occupy the building and advance the goals and objectives of your master plan to bring in the types of businesses that are high-quality and also provide for jobs for residents of Kenilworth. To offset that additional impervious coverage, we had part of our original approval was a detention facility located parallel to the front of the building. That detention system was overdesigned to begin with, so the additional 1,000 square feet would be mitigated by that existing detention facility. As part of our initial submission for this application, we did not submit all of the original drawings from our approval, but we will be complying with those. And by that, Harbor Consulting had a number of questions about utilities, lighting, and things of that sort. So the plan is to complete the building in accordance with the prior approval. There's no proposal here to shrink any of our responsibilities. What has happened at this point, there's a transformer proposed on the southwest side of the building. We held off on that because we wanted to see if we could get approval because this particular tenant has a much greater electrical demand than just a straight warehouse building. And we also did not pave that some of the portion that I drive through yet. So those are a few of the things that haven't occurred yet. Also, on the site, we have 17 cars along the west side. I believe there were 20 cars on the east side. There's also the ability, and was part of the approval, there's grass pavers that are going to go in there that will accommodate additional parking. That has not been installed yet either. The refuse area has been installed. On the original plan, this refuse area was to serve the entire building. Now this refuse area will simply serve what would be what we're calling proposed tenant space number two. This compactor will serve the remainder of the building. To facilitate parking for this tenant, as Mr. Savino pointed out, he needs some additional parking. So what the landlord did, who also controls 30 Bowright, is he earmarked 20 spaces along our common boundary line that would go towards the tenant, the new tenant. So to compensate the existing tenants in the building, we are installing 16 spaces along the east side of the building, and we're installing another 17 spaces in the northwest corner. So what we're doing is bringing the parking count up on 30 Bowright from 135 spaces to 163 spaces. For 20 Bowright, we have the 67, or excuse me, the 47 that we approved for, plus the 20 at 30 Bowright, gives us a parking capacity of 67. Interestingly enough, there were the existing tenants, we were here many, many months and years ago, for a parking variance for 30 Bowright, where I believe it was approved for 141 spaces. So there were a few less spaces because we had come back in to get a drive-in door approved at the northwest corner for one of our tenants. And we were supposed to install some additional parking space. That never happened because we knew this was coming, so we figured we'd hold off and then address it all in one shot. As far as the parking demand goes, under the ITE code, a warehouse of this type of buildings require over 439 spaces on average for every thousand square feet. That would equate to 19 cars for the warehouse area on 20 Bowright. For the light industrial or manufacturing portion, the requirement is, under the ITE code, is 1.85 cars per thousand square feet. So that would equate to 22. The office standard of four per thousand is consistent with the ITE. So when you add those up using the ITE standards, you come up with 63 parking spaces. So in my opinion, we have sufficient parking for the shoes with vehicles that are available at 20 Bowright, plus the additional vehicles that are being divided on 30 Bowright. As to the existing building at 30 Bowright, the required number of parking spaces calculates out to 258. And as stated earlier, we have been approved for 141. We are now proposing 163 on-site. If you net out the 20 cars for 20 Bowright, that puts us at 143. So we're still in excess of what was approved in prior applications. So based upon our tenants, their experience, how their employment works, and how their employees come to and from the site, I think the parking variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or the purpose of your own plan. I believe that the benefit of not over-parking is that you're reducing that impervious area on the site. So in my opinion, that could be granted. In addition to the lot coverage variance, there's also like a reciprocal variance required for open space ratio. 20% is required. We're at 19.1%, so we're shy by 1,020 square feet that we're over on impervious coverage. We are in receipt of Mr. O'Brien and Harbor Consulting's reports. We don't have any issues in complying with those reports. Some of the information, such as laying information, things of that sort, we're already submitted. We'll just go over the project, we'll put everything together and make a final submission so that we meet all the standards of the ordinance as well as the conditions outlined in the reports. There were some weight requests for landscaping. We did install some landscaping between the two properties. We put some number three hedge through there, and we added a shade tree at the end of Bowright Avenue just to try and dress up the site a bit and clean it up. Something else I could address in the committee's report.
Number four, Mr. O'Brien talked about the walkway.
Oh, that, thank you. What we did as part of the design, there's an existing handicap ramp that is located on the southwest corner of the building. When we did it, we striped that crosswalk area. We were proposing some concrete sidewalk that would connect to the existing handicap walkway that exists on 30 Bowright. So people who park along here, they do have to walk down the driveway, they would then come across and could enter the building, either the employee entrance or the main entrance of the building.
Number six of Mr. O'Brien, three-four, talked about the landscape offer between the two properties having 30 junipers. Could you discuss briefly?
We actually did install junipers in there. I'm sorry, we did. The sea juniper, which tend to be more deer-resistant than some of the other materials, which are provided and things of that sort. We think they will work well in that area, providing for a sufficient buffer between the two properties. And then obviously, it'll be constant maintenance for the two properties on the same.
Good.
Are there any issues in the?
Attention, yes, no? No. One of the things, what we did do, let's take a step back. When we were adding these parking spaces on 30 Bowright, we're adding about 7,000 square feet of additional impervious area. So to mitigate that, what we did was we proposed for the expansion of the existing detention basin on the south side of Lafayette. And that would mitigate the additional runoff and reducing the size of the office, so that will mean the people aren't reduced, the people are off rate, so there's no negative impact associated with that. We will be providing a maintenance manual for that facility as well, as requested by Harvard.
Questions, Mr. O'Brien?
If I can go first.
You just mentioned the drainage in Lafayette. That whole picture, that's completely overgrown and.
Well, that's why we're developing a maintenance manual. This area is going to be completely cleaned out of weeds and debris, we'll redress it, re-landscape it, reseed it.
Great, okay. And then you mentioned that on both sides of the new building, 30 Bowright, we have the parking, and that's all for the new tenant that you're having.
No, no, these grayed-out spaces are for the existing tenants. In other words, we're borrowing from Peter Faye Ball.
I get it.
Okay.
What happens when tenant number two comes in?
Peter Faye Ball. Well, they, we have to look at what the parking demand will be for that tenant based on what I gave you as far as numbers. That was based on the entire building, not just tenant number two. When I said we will need 67 cars, or 63 cars for 20 Bowright, that included.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? No questions, chairman. How about you, Chris?
Just a clarification, 37 spaces are proposed or will be on 20 Bowright?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
There's 37 that are currently striped and shown on the asphalt. There's going to be additional spaces installed as part of resolution of approval, and there are going to be grass pavers at the north and northeast corner and northwest corner. And that will come in if you.
Thank you.
I have to say, I really like what you're doing here because the increase of the impervious coverage really helps it along. So usually you will have advocates in front of us that'll say, "I need and I want this," or no give-back. There's something coming back here, which is, it's a nice touch. So. Anyone else you have? Your shoe, Mr. Falcone?
Two.
Your shoe, you want to sum it up?
Short and sweet. You know, we think this application should be granted. I think Alpha would be a great tenant, a great attribute to Kenilworth. It's obviously a very high-quality facility, and they need just these changes in the plans. And, you know, it works.
Just one additional question from his last caller. I know he said that all the conditions of the original approval are going to be met. One of the key ones that I'm interested in is there was to be banding on the facade of the building, which to this point has not been put up.
I was involved in the actual facade of the building, the architect. I would have to defer to the owner, but that.
It's still.
If that's required under the original approval, then technically it would have to be addressed and be checked through.
Because again, it's, to me, at this point, it's somewhat unfortunate, I think, as a board member, that the original plan for the building was strictly warehouse, and now it's kind of shifting away from warehouse, and yet we built a solid cement building, you know, with not a lot of architectural features, and that was kind of the thing that was asked by the board to give it something. And so far, it's not there, so I don't know how much of the exterior of the building is completed, but from my perspective, it looks like it's pretty much complete, and yet it's not there, so anyway.
We'll check that. Yep. Mr. David, that is an enforcement issue, so that we should refer that to the construction department so that they take the architectural plans that's approved by this board, signed by the officers, and that's the building they're supposed to build.
Right, thank you.
So, can we have the motion opened?
Motion to open to the public.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ladati, second by Mr. David. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter, only seeing none?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close was made by Mr. Ladati, second by Mr. David. All in favor?
Aye.
Any statements you'd like to make for us, Kevin?
Aaron, to remind the board, both applications require waivers from item number 21, 29, rather, which is to show the location of all existing trees or tree masses, and item 30, which is a landscaping and buffering plan showing the entire site. Because this improvement is limited to a very small area, I think that those waivers are justified in this case.
I do, too.
And then the relief requested for both applications is site plant approval. We also maximum impervious coverage and minimum open space because of the increase in impervious coverage, parking variances, and the non-residential dwell-are fee are required for both of these applications.
Okay. Chris, anything?
No.
Nothing, Chris?
Just that he already agreed to address all comments in both our letters.
Okay. Let's hope as we. And all conditions of prior approval.
Yes.
Waivers, no issues?
Yeah.
Okay. How about the board? The board have anything to say about this application pertaining primarily to parking? We always know that that's the big issue. We've heard testimony. Does anybody have anything? Okay.
So.
Say. Someone like to make a motion here for, I guess, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say.
Take a motion, including all the conditions and waivers as previously stated, to approve this application.
Second. Okay, motion is made by Robert, and seconded by.
Bob, Mr. Smith.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Serma.
Yes.
Mr. Jockey.
Yes.
The daily.
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
So the dowry?
Yes.
The tar?
Yes.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Here in the middle of 11 o'clock.
Drive my, drive my head home.
Who are the wagons?
What's a problem with the facade?
You remember, there was, again, a lot of concern from the board that it's just this massive, you know, box with gray cement. And so requirement of the approval, condition of approval, was that there would be colored bands installed. It was supposed to be red. No, it was supposed to be, I believe, red bands.
No, no.
Well, right now, this is probably.
No, reds might not be current, but reds.
How we change it to?
No, no, red was the other.
Just as a little bit of formality, we're having a conversation, but we're still on road, so we have to be a little careful of that.
Yeah, we need to.
But let's just, it'll take two minutes, and then we can ask that question. Just stick with it. Any comments for the board? Seeing none?
Motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Ladati, second by Mr. Schalke. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none.
Oh, is it wanted on the public, or do you want it?
No, 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 let us adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to close to the meeting. Yeah, sorry. Motion to close to the meeting. Second.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I lost control. Sorry.
There you go.